Good evening, councillors and members of the public. I'm sorry we're a little late in starting this meeting. And before we start, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and over there. And I'd like to remind you to ensure your mobile phones are switched to silent or off, please. And councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure your cards are pushed firmly into the console? Okay, so now we move on to the main items of business. And the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 15th of July have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Emma, have there been any apologies for absence?
We have apologies for absence from Stephen Reynolds, thank you.
Thank you. And have any members declared any interest before the meeting?
Before the meeting, thank you.
Good. Have any members... No, are there any questions from members of the public? I beg your pardon. Oh, sorry, do members have any non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interest to declare? That's hard when you've just had an egg and cress roll. Well, yeah. No? And have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None received.
Thank you. Elizabeth, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There have been some relevant changes, members, since your last meeting to update you on. Firstly, at the beginning of July, the government published its document fixing the foundations, creating a more prosperous nation as part of its growth agenda. Now, members may have a chance to read that document. This includes future proposed changes to the development control process, including the granting of automatic permission on brownfield land and also the transferring of infrastructure applications that have an element of housing to the nationally significant infrastructure regime. And these proposals are subject to further guidance from government, so it's just giving you heads up as to what will be coming on stream. In addition, and with immediate effect, the government's threshold for measuring planning application performance has changed and been raised to require that no fewer than 50% from 40% of major applications shall be determined outside of the statutory determination period. Now, this performance target informs the government's poorly performing designation and special measures regime. And a proposal is also there to bring minor developments into this performance regime, and that is one to nine dwellings and up to 1,000 square metres of commercial floor space. Just to advise members, and in fact, this council at the moment performs very well on the speed of determining major applications, and we're up to about 90%, so we're not threatened with this designation at the moment, but it's clearly something that as planning committee members you do need to be aware of, that is in the background. A second important change has followed a High Court judgment received last week. This was a judicial review by two local councils of the government's decision to change the policy and guidance on affordable housing and infrastructure last autumn. Now, this change effectively raised the threshold to more than 10 dwellings before affordable housing and infrastructure contributions could be sought. The court decided that the government's actions were not lawful due to flawed procedure, including inadequate consultation. As a consequence, the government guidance in the NPPG has been withdrawn. So in respect of affordable housing, this means that the council can now revert to applying policy H5 of the local plan, including for asking for on-site affordable housing in rural settlements on appropriate sites for five or more dwellings or sites over 0.2 of a hectare. So this is clearly good news for us. It means we can go back to our previous policy at the current time and seek affordable housing contributions. In relation to infrastructure, the NPPG changes to the pooling arrangements that took effect on the 6th of April will continue to apply so that it is not practical to revert back to applying the supplementary planning document or the PIC calculator on one to 10 dwellings as previously. And this is because all contributions since the 6th of April have to be justified on a bespoke and case-specific basis and not exceed five obligations for any single piece of infrastructure. And members will be familiar with that advice that we have been given you since April. So given this, the infrastructure providers are not likely to seek contributions on other than major developments in order to maximise the contributions that can be achieved. So there are no applications on tonight's agenda that require reassessment in the light of the affordable housing policy position. And in relation to planning infrastructure contributions, items A1 and B1 are such that the advice given in the report is still considered to be valid in that they fall short of the 10 unit threshold. So I suspect that's a lot of information. I hope that's helpful, but happy to take any questions. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you. Just one question, you might have said it, but can we go back and ask for the money from previous applications that we didn't put the contributions? There was a meeting that we attended that we all had an update sheet where they all just, all the money just came off. Can we go back and ask for the money or not?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't know whether Joe, our lawyer, will want to comment on that as well. My view is that we wouldn't be able to do that realistically because the policy position that came into effect was a material consideration at that time, and the change of the policy position only becomes material from the point at which the court has found it to be unlawful, in which case it's only going forward that we might be able to need to apply that.
Yeah, just to reiterate, you can't tend to apply these things retrospectively. And if you, essentially, in any situation, if you grant a planning permission and you haven't attached to section 106, which is the mechanism for getting the money and the affordable housing in, at the date of the permission, you can't then retrospectively go back and ask for one because the permission has been granted. So, no, we can't.
Thank you very much. Are we content then with that report? So item six on the agenda is the quarterly appeals report. Catherine, would you like to present the report to the committee, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There have been a total of five appeal decisions received in the last quarter. Of those five, two have been allowed and three have been dismissed. If I could draw your attention to page five of the agenda to begin with, the first appeal at Oldwick Cops was a delegated refusal and was allowed by the inspector. The proposal related to extensions and alterations in the Green Belt and AOMB slash AGLV. The application followed on from a previous consent and would have resulted in an additional dormer window and increased ridge height at the property. The inspector reasoned that, having regard to the overall bulk height and form of the extensions, they would not be disproportionate, and the extensions would have resulted in a cumulative increase of 45% over the original. The second appeal decision, turn over to page six, relates to the erection of a new dwelling at the rear of number 29 Sunny Hill in Whitely. This was a delegated refusal again and was dismissed by the inspector. Members may recall that there have been several previous applications on this site for a new dwelling. However, this application, the inspector concluded that the form and position of the dwelling proposed would have resulted in a cramped overdevelopment of the plot and would have been visually dominant and oppressive to the occupiers of number 24 Sunny Hill. The third decision, which is towards the bottom of page seven of the agenda, relates to the former Charles Hill Nursery Site. The application was for the erection of five dwellings and garages following, I think, removal of some of the former nursery buildings on the site. The main reason, sorry, the application was allowed by the inspector. The main reason for that was that, contrary to the council's conclusions on this application, the site comprised previously developed land. The inspector therefore reasoned that the proposal would not be inappropriate development in the Green Belt, and that, having regard to the previous development on the site, it would not have an urbanising impact and would in fact restore the landscape character of the site. By way of an update, subsequent to that appeal decision, there was a further application submitted and under consideration for three dwellings. That application was subsequently reported to the Southern Area Planning Committee and granted. The fourth appeal decision on page eight of your agenda relates to a residential extension at Moore's Cottage. This again was a delegated refusal and was dismissed by the inspector. As with the Oldwick Cops application, the main issue was the impact on the Green Belt. However, in this case, the proposal would have increased the floor space in excess of 50% over the original building. The inspector concluded that the proposal was therefore contrary to Green Belt policy. An application for costs was also submitted by the appellant, but this was refused by the inspector. The fifth and final decision for the quarter is reported on page nine of the agenda. This relates to an application for the erection of six dwellings at Manor Fields in Milford. This again was a delegated refusal and was dismissed by the inspector, who concluded that the proposal would cause harm to the amenities of future occupants of the dwellings, specifically in respect of the quality of the outdoor amenity spaces to be provided. As with the previous decision, an application for an award of costs was made by the appellant, and again, this was dismissed by the inspector. That concludes the quarterly appeals report. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any questions? Councillor Holder.
Surely, Madam Chairman, if the inspector dismisses the appeal, the appellant has no right to apply for costs anyway, has he? So I don't quite understand why they have done.
Thank you, Chairman. At the time of the application for costs, the appellant wouldn't have known what the decision was of the inspector because the two decisions come together. So they would have been appealing the decision, applying for costs at the same time. So they would have got two pieces of bad news at the same time, a dismissal and a refusal of costs.
Thank you. Any other questions? So is the committee happy to note the report? Thank you. And now item seven on the agenda is the quarterly enforcement report. Rebecca, would you like to present the report to committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Please, may I direct members' attention to page 12 of the report? This will be for the site-specific updates. There are two site-specific updates for the central area, both on page 12. The first being Cost Cutter at 40 Green Lane, Farncombe, Godlemine. The identified breach here is the installation of four condensing units. Officers have served an enforcement notice, followed by a breach-of-condition notice. The requirements of the breach-of-condition notice have not been complied with, and officers are currently liaising with the council's legal service, and we are currently awaiting further witness statements to strengthen our case. Moving on to the second case at the bottom of page 12, this is Godlemine Kebab Centre, 137 High Street in Godlemine. The identified breach here is the damage to the tiles on the shop front of a listed building. Officers have served a section 215 notice on the owner, that is an untidy site notice, and this notice has not been fully complied with. We have been working with legal services with regards to prosecution, and the advice given is that a new section 215 notice should be served. Now, to provide a verbal update and further clarification on this, officers have very recently been advised that the premises might be under new ownership. Therefore, it's likely that we will need to serve a new section 215 on the new owner. We will do this shortly and keep you updated on this matter. If I can now turn to the enforcement statistics, which are on page 16 of the report. So looking at the table at top of page 16, referring to the caseload, the target for this is 250. For the last quarter, April to June, the number of cases on hand was 238. This represents a decrease on the previous quarter of January to March and is also within our target. Turning our attention to the table at bottom of page 16, which is the performance against the local performance indicator, the target of this being 75% of cases actioned within 12 weeks. For the last quarter, April to June, we actioned 95% of the cases within 12 weeks. This represents an increase on the last quarter and is also within our target. Thank you very much, Chairman. Happy to take any questions.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Two points really. Firstly, on the Godlemine Kebab Centre, is that going to cause any significant further delay to this, or is it simply that we've just got no choice because of the new ownership? And then, secondly, on the enforcement statistics, again, it's terrific achievement. It's always good to see that we've closed more cases than we've had open and effectively putting us on a sort of, heading in the right direction. That's absolutely terrific. Looking at the performance against the local performance indicator, I see that for a good few quarters now, we have significantly exceeded the target, and I wonder if there will be such a time as it will be worth increasing that target rather than simply achieving something, maybe pushing it up to 80% rather than down at 70%, which we haven't been below or anywhere close to since, what, 2013, which was quite some time ago. And it seems a bit pointless to have a target that we're just going to hit all the time. I'd rather see something a little bit more ambitious. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could start and respond to Councillor Martin's question about the target, I think it's a very interesting question. It's clearly, as officers, we like you to stretch us and we like to feel we're being efficient on your behalf in processing applications and investigating breaches. I think that the balance needs to be struck between dealing with new cases and dealing with the older cases. And clearly, there are different stages of the enforcement process, and we have to make sure we keep abreast of all the different stages to make sure we're not just ploughing ahead and just dealing with the very new cases and actioning them. And if we change the target, it may just alter the balance of emphasis and resources. But we will take the point into account, I think is a very valid one, and it's something I'm sure that the ONS Performance Subcommittee will probably ask the same question of us going forward during the year. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Regarding Cost Cutter, I became aware when I was canvassing before the election of a young lady who lived next door to the Cost Cutter. I'm obviously very pleased, therefore, that she is being taken into consideration because I know she feels her life has completely changed over the last 10, 15 years, and definitely not for the better. So I greatly appreciate her care. Thank you.
Rebecca, you wish to come back?
Sorry, just to respond, Councillor Martin, to the first point to do with the Godlemine Kebab Centre. Ultimately, if there's new owners, we will have to serve a new section 215 notice, which will slightly delay matters. The legal advice is that obviously the new owners, because the section 215 notice is a land charge, they should be fully aware that there is a notice on there. So therefore, the legal advice is that we issue a new section 215 notice with a minimum compliance period. So we will look to do that and obviously update you accordingly.
What is the minimum period, do you know?
It entirely depends on the nature of the problem. In this instance, I haven't dealt with the file myself, but in this instance, the breach has damaged the tiles on the shop frontage of a listed building, and I suggest that you would certainly require no more than 28 days to rectify that matter.
Thank you. Any more questions? So can we confirm the committee is happy to note the report? Thank you very much. Moving on to applications for planning permission, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of considerations of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 7th of September, at a time to be agreed. So moving on to the planning applications, and the first one is item A1, WA 2015 1074, erection of two dwellings following demolition of existing dwelling at land at 72 Coombe Road, Farncombe, 3SL. Catherine, would you like to introduce the application to committee, please? I understand there's an update on this.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, can I firstly draw your attention, please, to the printed update sheet, of which you should have a copy in front of you? You will note on there that since the publication of the agenda report, we have received a consultation response from the Surrey Wildlife Trust requesting that ecological surveys be undertaken. This is primarily due to the proximity of the site to small pockets of woodland and trees, and that the possibility of the existing building to be demolished could provide roosting opportunities for bats. I will remind councillors of their responsibilities as set out expressly in the circular with regards to protected species and the need to establish their presence and the impact of the development on them prior to taking a decision on an application. Therefore, it is recommended at this stage that the application is deferred to allow for the submission and assessment of those necessary protected species surveys. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Members, do you have any questions before we move straight on to the recommendation, then? So moving on to the recommendation in the update sheet, that the application be deferred to allow submission and assessment of the necessary protected species surveys.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Okay, the next application is item B1, WA 2015 1232. Erection of a dwelling together with new access and associated works at Soler, Manorley Road, Milford, GU85EF. William, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. So this is the application at Soler, Manorley, oh, sorry, Manorley Road in Milford for the erection of a dwelling together with new access and associated works. So this is the site location plan. So we can see the Godlemine and Guilford bypass road situated towards the south of the site. The property in question is this property here, Soler, and the land in question is situated towards the rear of the property and would involve the subdivision of the site into a new residential curtilage to allow for the erection of the new dwelling. So these are some elevations of the proposal itself, so it would be for a two-storey, a four-bedroom detached dwelling. And as we can see from the block plan itself, it would be situated within the rear of the site, along with associated rear amenity space situated as here, along with front parking spaces situated towards the front of the dwelling, along with a turning space, along with a new pedestrian and vehicle access situated onto the front A283 Godlemine-Gilford bypass road. These pictures give an indication of the site itself. So this is just a front elevation photograph. The site is actually behind all these shrubber and hedging here, such. This gate here is actually the existing gated access into the site, and this is actually, where this van's parked here, is actually the neighbouring access to the neighbouring property of Rendlesham. Just a side, for the side rear, a side elevation view of the site itself, with the petrol station situated a bit further up the road. And another picture of the front elevation of the site with the existing gated access and neighbouring access as well. Again, a picture of the gated access. And just to point out as well, this land at the front of the site is actually owned by the County Highway Authority. So in terms of determining issues, the principle of development, we're in the rural settlement of Milford, so there is a sort of principle of development, obviously subject to visual and residential amenity considerations. In terms of landscape and sort of impact on visual amenity, the properties are long, let me show you on here, Manorley Road itself, the site would form within the context of the property situated along Manorley Close, along with adjacent neighbouring development within the rural settlement as well. There is sufficient amenity space, and the size of the proposed rooms to the dwelling comply with the technical space standards set by the government. In terms of impact on neighbouring amenity, the proposal is not deemed to have a material impact in terms of loss of light, overbearing form, direct overlooking or loss of privacy towards neighbouring properties. In terms of parking highway considerations, if I just refer members back to the plan, this is proposed block plan, this is actually amended plan. The original submission had included only two parking spaces as part of the proposal, but the adopted parking waverly guidelines actually required two and a half spaces, so i.e. three parking spaces situated towards the front of the dwelling. So they've amended that to include one, two, and three spaces here, and still retaining the sufficient turning space as required. In terms of parking highway considerations, the County Highway Authority has carefully looked at the application and studied the potential impact on both on highway safety and pedestrian safety, and is sufficient and feels that there is sufficient vehicle visibility on the front highway, and there would be sufficient parking provision as well, along with sufficient and safe pedestrian access along the front of the site. So if I refer members now to the update sheet. So just to point out a few things, page one of the update sheet, the response from the council's waste recycling coordinator had in error made reference to bins to be left for collection on Manorley Road, which is situated towards the rear of the site, but actually, reference should be made to bins having been left, should have been, should be left for collection on the front A283. There have been no additional letters of representation received. We have, since the publication of the report, had the comments from Whitely Parish Council, who have raised an objection to the development based on overlooking of neighbouring properties, poor vehicle visibility, and no provision for service and delivery vehicles, including waste collection, and also that the development would set a precedent for similarly planned developments along the same road. Just our response really to those comments are, a lot of those issues in terms of parking, highway safety, waste storage and neighbouring amenity are set out within the report. And, yeah. There has been additional letter from the applicant, sitting at a number of points. The applicant has set out that proposal would represent a suitable infill development and is very similar to a recent, well, an approved dwelling along Manorley Close. There has been no objection from the County Highway Authority owing to sufficient sightlines. The site is situated within the rural settlement boundary of Milford and would meet the council's housing needs, and any issues of overlooking could be overcome. They are willing to obscurely glaze the rear windows to the dwelling if needs be. There are no amendments to any of the conditions or informatives, and there's no additional conditions or informatives. And as such, the recommendation remains as set out in the agenda report, that subject to conditions 1 to 13, set out on pages 71 to 75, and the formative 1 to 12 are set out on pages 75 to 77 of the agenda, that permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, William. And Councillor Thornton is going to start us on this one.
Thank you, Chairman. I do question the assessment undertaken by the highways authority, considering it's the busy road right next to the petrol station. If anyone's used it, it's in the mornings, it's an absolute nightmare, people turning out of the petrol station. It's an absolute nightmare, people turning out of the petrol station. Was the assessment undertaken by the Highways Authority before the update of the Recycling Coordinator that they're going to put the bins out on bin day on a main road like that with double white lines?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. The application was assessed by the County Highway Authority before the rescinding of the email by the council's Wasting and Recycling Coordinator. So yes, it was. Oh, sorry.
So what... The change of... Sorry. Yeah, is the County Highways Authority aware that in the plans that they were going to put the bins on Manorley Road? Yeah? Are they aware now that they're going to be on the busiest... Probably the busiest road in Milford? And in actual fact, it's not even their land to put it on?
Chairman, if I could put that point up. My understanding from the case officer is that the County Highway Authority are aware that it's the applicant's intention that the bins will be collected from the A283. There has been a discussion raising the County Highway Authority's awareness that that will be the proposal. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, I'd like to question the County Highways Authority making that assessment. Because that is... This... Obviously, my colleagues are going to say something else, but this is going to set a precedent for that road. Everyone's going to do exactly the same thing on that road. And we haven't... After the garage, there is no... Apart from the new development, newish development on the other side, there are no other properties on that side that go onto that busy road.
Do you want to come back, Elizabeth, or...?
All I would say at this stage, Chairman, is that members will be aware of our normal advice to you that we do seek the County Highway Authority's advice on technical matters in relation to highway safety. So that any conclusions you reach in relation to the safety implications clearly need to be seen in the context of the fact they are your experts, we have asked them the view and they have come to the conclusion this is acceptable. And I just say that, I know that you aren't surprised that I would say that.
Councillor Martin, Junior, I think.
Halt fire. I was going to say much the same thing. My big fear is, and I absolutely appreciate the Highways' recommendation on this. And in all my years as a councillor, I've usually taken that... Okay, with a bit of a pinch of salt, but fair dues and they are the experts. But I have to say, on this one, it really does beg a belief. Because this is, with the exception of the petrol station, and service stations do often appear on main roads and they have very long, reasonably long slip roads to come on and off. They're very well... You can see them from quite some distance and all that sort of thing. Fine. But we're now looking at a property on what is a really significant major road leading on to the A3. And, okay, the onsite parking, fine, passing places, fine. I've got no difficulty with those bits. But it's actually that the thought of refuse vehicles once a week stopping outside that property at who knows what time could cause major traffic congestion in the area. And I just really find it difficult to see how that would work. And my bigger fear, and I would quite like the view of officers for this, is what sort of precedent does this set? And what in our power do we have, given that this... Look, if you look at the map, if you look at the area, all the other large back gardens along the same road, which could have very much the same sort of development put on them. And if we say yes to this, then obviously the material planning consideration is what's happened nearby. Are we in danger of setting a precedent that we cannot look back on which will ultimately change the nature of that road completely from effectively an arterial road to a residential road? And I'm really struggling with that. Albeit taking into consideration what our Highways colleagues have said. I'm really struggling.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just start by picking up the second point in relation to precedent. Clearly, as you are aware, you need to assess this application on its own individual merits and not be concerned about what may come forward in the future. In that, the applicant has a right to seek to satisfy you that on its own, this application is acceptable across planning criteria, including highway safety and servicing. If, however, permission is granted and future applications come forward, the test for you on future applications is the further application, taking into account what has already been approved, if it is at this site. Are the two together cumulatively harmful to the point at which you reach the point that you would wish to refuse the second application? There's certainly nothing that requires you to necessarily grant further applications simply because you have granted this one. That in that sense, there's no strict precedent. And that's particularly in relation to any highway safety issues. But what I would say, of course, in relation to being consistent in your decision-making, if you find the development of this plot in this location fronting onto the road harmful to character, you would, I think, find this decision quoted back at you that if you try to resist future applications on the basis it's harming the unfettered nature of this strip of land, you probably would find an applicant saying we've already granted that one. So it's slightly different in relation to the visual impact arguments rather than the highway safety arguments. But the strict argument is everything on its merits. Anything further would have to take into account anything that's already been granted. Thank you.
If I could just come back very quickly, and this is a rhetorical question, but at what point is too much deemed? I mean, you say one house is okay, and then another house is that okay? And then another house... I mean, the difficulty is when we make those points is at what point is one individual house each time too much? And I have to say, I think one house is too much.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Thank you. I agree 100% with what councillor Martin Junior has just said. I think the difficulty with us is that time and time again, and this applies particularly to Highways, the cumulative impact of development is never properly taken account of. Certainly in my own ward in Buzzbridge, the cumulative impact of lots and lots of housing developments over time has had a tremendously detrimental impact on the movements and on the congestion in our neck of the woods. And I think the same is true with the key site and Catral Lane and all the rest of it. All the developments taking place there have given us a very strained road network and is subject to great congestion. Here, it's slightly different because, of course, what we're dealing with is judgment on safety. And this stretch of road has no housing or no entrances to housing beyond the Esso garage on the way going towards the A3. And I think it would be a very sad change to this stretch of road to see a succession of houses coming in. And the reality is, if we say yes to one, it becomes a very material consideration when the second and third takes place. And I look askance at this in terms of what the Highways or the TDC section of the county council has done on this one. And I have to say, I'm very unhappy. And if we can't come to a decision, and I don't think we can reasonably to oppose this, I would like to defer this proposal for further consideration by Highways and maybe get Highways to come and talk to us because I'm very unhappy with this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I had expected to be first in line on this one since I was the ward councillor who brought it... Who brought the request forward for it to be in front of this committee. Now, I was first alerted to this application by a resident whose land borders this site. And I spoke with officers about my concerns, particularly about access on to and from the A283. Since it is a very busy road and in even my experience in Milford over the last four years, that busyness or the density of traffic has increased and there is no reason to think that it's plateaued and won't get worse in the future. Now, having spoken a lot with the officers, I've had good cooperation to my concerns. And I feel that before, as we have a very thorough report and enhanced this time, in my experience for the first time, by a much fuller description from the SCC Highways Officer, which we don't usually get. But I wanted it to come before the committee because my own conclusions on some matters of judgment differ from that of the officers. If we can just first have a look at the site plan. And the one that I'm looking at is indeed that one. We have a situation where the plot of land next door to Soler on the south side is in the hands of the house called Rendlesham. And you'll be able to see there that there are... There is a sort of a driveway. And indeed, William pointed out in his photographs that that van we saw was actually in that driveway. Now, in the years that I've been there, and it isn't very long, is it? That's the first time I've ever seen a vehicle in that particular area. And the actual driveway on to the road has been freshly tarmacled previously to that, it was grass. The gate itself is something like a metal fibre bar, but behind it is completely wooden fencing. And bear in mind that sort of over the last 30 years, residents tell me that that particular drive was used perhaps once a year for the delivering of manure to the old gentleman who had a particularly verdant garden. Because Rendlesham's garage, parking spaces are actually on the Manorley Road. And the main access for Rendlesham will still be on Manorley Road. This one will still be very, very little used. So it's not really falling in the same category as this particular proposed development at Soler. Now, the Esso service station, you can also see on that plan that there is one of the access roads and that's for the exit only. So the exit and the entrance to the garage are completely separated. And I think that's quite an important feature for something that I'll come on to in a few months in time. The additional comment from the applicant refers to 5A Manorley Close. And it is true that the plot of land, which we only see defined as a triangle without a top boundary on the north end of Manorley Close, was exactly like Soler. The bottom part of the garden was sold off and there is now a house there. But the key thing is that their access is into the northern end of Manorley Close. There's nothing going out on to the A283 at all. And I feel that that is a very important and different situation. Now, if I now refer to page 61 and policy H10, we see there that we have mentioned at the top that there's no set standard for garden sizes, but the policy requires that a usable outdoor area should be provided in association with residential development and that appropriate provision for children's play is required. Now, the actual usable outdoor area for, for example, the children of this proposed house is about the half of what Soler intend or to hold on to for their house. And both houses are four bedrooms. That doesn't seem very right and proper to me. Now, if we can sort of go on to page 63, and there could be groans here because the heading is parking and highway considerations. But let me first of all deal with, on page 64, and particularly the highway side. The Highways Authority refers to small delivery vans. The number of larger vehicles needing to stop wait on the A283 would be very small and would not occur so often as to regularly cause a disruption to the movement of vehicles on the A283. Now, this is where I have a real problem. Because that is his judgment, but my judgment from my experience in the vicinity is quite, quite different from that. And then a little later on, he talks about a small number of large delivery vehicles. Well, my experience of delivery vehicles over the years is that they have grown gradually larger and larger. We now have a lot of long-wheelbase vehicles. There's more of them on the road because of the internet shopping and home deliveries. And so I don't think there will be a small number that are likely to be parking on the A283. Delivery drivers are under very tight time schedules and they are not prepared to go into driveways and spend time turning around. It'll be parked on the road and then they will dash in and dash back out as they do at home with me. I've had a knock on the door, walked for about five seconds, opened the door and the fellow's on his way out through the gate and sort of saying, I've dropped this off for you at the door. And this is the norm. We've got to talk about reality and we've got to talk about things going forward. So I'm very sort of distressed at that way of expressing things. I can't have any sort of truck with the technical aspects that he's identified. As Elizabeth has said too, we've got to sort of accept that he's the expert. And I'll sort of accept that at this time. Larger vehicles, we've already referred to the bin pickup vehicles. But I mean, if this thing is constructed, for example, there's going to be the low loaders that bring tippers and cranes. There's going to be scaffolding lorries and so on. These are all going to be on the highway because you cannot get down into this site. And if some of these heavy vehicles try to get down on to the site, they will become bogged down because of the softer ground. It's just an absolute nonsense. And what about when the people move in, removal vans? They'll be there for the whole day. Now, what I can say is, or what I feel I've read in here, is that Highways Authority have already shown a sensitivity to driving conditions causing inconvenience to other highway users. And I illustrate that by the fact that if we are on the 283 heading towards Guildford and we're wanting to cross the incoming line to turn into Eshing Lane, we are confronted with a sign which says, don't turn there. You go up to the roundabout, turn round and then you bear left off the lane to go into Eshing Lane. And let's look at the Esso service station. Turning into the Esso service station, entrance is concerned or turning into Elstead Road. From both these points, when we're approaching from Guildford, there are waiting lane spaces created so that vehicles are in those waiting lanes and the other two lanes allow free movement of traffic sort of either going towards Hazelmeir or coming the other way. And, you know, if we allow... That is then not disrupting other users. And therefore, this road, I believe, has to be retained in that sort of state. And if we go on to... Sorry, I will give up soon. Page 74. If we look at conditions 11, 12 and 13, there's a very strong point made there in the reasoning. 12, and 13, there's a very strong point made there in the reasoning, not cause inconvenience to other highway users, and that's three times. So this is a very important principle, and therefore, I cannot feel myself, and it's really been supported by other councillors tonight, that I can support this particular application.
Thank you councillor Lee. Councillor Opt, please.
Thank you Chairman. As a new boy on the block in this particular area, the thing that struck me, looking at these plans and knowing the area from when I've passed it, is none of the houses on the other side of the road, although they're on a greater development, have entrances out on to that road. And there must have been some thinking in the foreground, before, when they were planning these particular properties, for consideration of that road. It rather supports the argument of the amount of traffic using it, and it must have been looked at in detail in that particular time. And I rather think that supports some of the arguments today. Thank you.
Could I just ask a question? The picture that we've got on at the moment shows the view looking towards the petrol station, is that an arrow to say no overtaking, or is that just, it's an arrow? So that would just be, just a little bit past where any vehicle might be parked, isn't it? Councillor James.
Thank you Madam Chairman. I know the site very well for probably at least 60 years, having driven past it to West Wittering all the time. I would suggest that, I actually, I assumed that the access with that wire gate actually was already the access to this site, hadn't realised that there was already another one there. When this next one gets tarmacled, that changes that grass verge. Further down the line, when those other two bits are also built on, they'll be further crossing over of that green verge. The sign before it says, welcome to Milford or something, one of those. I would suggest that it actually alters the street scene of the entrance, the gateway to Milford, from the main access road, and any future development would alter the street scene. I presume that in order to construct the building, there won't be small vehicles or small lorries, as the Highway Agency seem to think, there will be large ones entering the site, therefore, they're going to have to have a large, wide entrance across the green verge that is owned by the County Highway Agency, and not just a narrow car one, it'll be a wide one. And I presume, if you could go back to the pictures, the case officer said, there are lots of trees and the house will be hidden behind it, that one, in order to get access to the site, that's going to be wide enough for large vehicles to get in to build it, most of that green, that green verdant frontage that's going to screen the house will not be there, because you're going to have a great wide access, they might narrow it after for a car. So I would suggest it is going to alter the street scene into the access to Milford. Thank you Madam Chairman.
Thank you Vice Chairman.
Thank you Madam Chairman. Two or three questions if I may. Looking at that picture on the screen at the moment, I can't really detect, because the bottom half is dark, whether or not that is a lamp post, or whether it's some other post providing services, telephone, electricity or whatever, within the back garden, or rather, within this site. I'd appreciate knowing which. I am also intrigued, if I look at the location plan on page 50, the actual back garden of Soler actually ends before the Surrey County Council land begins. And I'm quite intrigued that this site now seems to encompass part of what appears to be the responsibility or probably the ownership of the County Council. I'm quite comfortable in the view that if that was Waverley Borough Council land, we would be on them like a tonne of bricks, and they would never ever get access to it without paying large amounts of money. I wonder if the County Council has really realised that it's the intention here of this development to take a piece of their land? And lastly, Madam Chairman, if the committee is minded to allow this to go ahead, given the probability that there are going to be an awful lot of large vehicles developing materials and so on, I wonder, could we have a condition, actually, that the access and the car parking arrangement shown on page 52 on the block plan is constructed first, so that we could get those vehicles as far as possible off the road? Thank you.
Thank you, and I've got councillor Martin here, but I'm, is it Tom?
I wonder Chairman, if perhaps, given the strength of feeling that we've got for this application, which particularly seem to stem around Highways issues, I could formally propose that we defer this application, pending a request to the County Council TDC, to actually come and act as sort of live consultees to this meeting on this particular issue, because I think it is so fraught with difficulty, I would sort of like to see the white of their eyes when they tell us that they've done everything they can to, you know, from the consultation point of view. You know, I wouldn't want to get to the end of the debate and then make that decision, because I think we'll end up having this debate all over again. But I believe I've got several seconds.
Is it on that particular point?
I would like to second that, and I would also like to add a request to our own planning officers to consider the potential harm to the street scene and the entrance to Milford. I think that's a perfectly valid point. And I think, at the same time, I think we should draw attention to Highways TDC in County Hall, to this very important point that councillor Lee made, which is that going north, there's no right turn into Eishing Lane. And similarly, if you turn that around, if you're coming south and you want to enter this site, you're going to be in a very dangerous position, holding up traffic, and so on and so forth. So it appears that two different rules are being applied to this situation here, and I think that will be a point well worth making. Just going back to the point made on ownership by the County Council, of course, the Vice Chairman will be aware that ownership of land is nothing to do with the planning of, in the planning matters. So I think the two things are very separate in terms of that. But I would certainly want to see a deferral, and I would certainly like further consideration to be given to this. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a proposal then to defer this. However, I do have four more people waiting to speak. Do you have something significant to add to the debate, or, I mean, you're very welcome obviously to speak, something significantly different, you say?
Thank you. I was going to add another point to the Highways question, and that is that there are, and I travel along this road quite a lot, there are two lanes leading into the traffic lights that then goes into one lane, and it's a race, the first two cars at the traffic light are determined to be the first car away from it. And trying to get out of the petrol stations, cars are travelling sometimes at 40 miles an hour. So I think there is a very valid point in bringing Highways on to this, because it is a dangerous space to have an entrance to a house.
So I'm advised that unless what anybody wants to say is in direct relation to the proposal to have a deferral, we should go straight to the vote. Does somebody have something? I do have other names here, I know, and I'm, but I'm advised that if it's not about the actual proposal, we should go straight to the vote on that proposal for it to be deferred? Yes? So can we see those in favour of that proposal to defer this application?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
So the proposal is deferred. Thank you very much now, or do I do? Nothing else to do? Thank you very much. No items to consider and exempt? And so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you, my favourite bit.